We will begin with the opening statements from the township and the property owner or their representative. Both parties may present their witnesses with an opportunity provided for both sides to cross-examine witnesses, and then there will be closing arguments. Once both parties have presented their cases, the board will either immediately conduct its deliberation and render its decision, or take the matter under consideration for a decision at a later time. Is there anyone in attendance representing the property owner?
Yes, my name is Malachi Gilliam. I am a representative of the property owner, a late DuBose junior, and I am also a representative of Earth Green General Contracting and Property Management, Iceland State Contractor, registered with the city of Cincinnati.
And your address, sir?
My address, yes, thirty-eight thirty-four Iberius, I-V-E-R-I-S Avenue, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-zero-six.
Thank you, sir. Doesn't matter. I got his name and address. Okay, Ms. Abrams, may we please have your opening statement?
Sure. Before we do, sir, what was your last name?
Gilliam, G-I-L-L-I-A-M.
And what's your relationship to the property owner?
He's my nephew, and I've also been contracted through him as part of to refurbish the property.
Did he provide the township anything in writing saying that Mr. Gilliam was his representative?
Nothing in writing, but I met with the fire chief several times at the property location with Mr. Dubois.
All right. Mr. Burri, that's technically not permitted. You got, if you have a representative who's not a lawyer, you have to have something in writing. But I'm willing to let that be as long as we have something in writing after the hearing today, if that's okay with the board.
That is okay. Can you get something in writing from Mr. Dubois, please?
Uh, I can't get it at this point.
I don't mean tonight. I mean, can you get...
Yes, sir, of course, of course.
Yeah, we just need to make sure that he authorized you.
He's a representative and he's legal, and I have here speaking on the tab, which is my...
On that basis, I'm fine with Mr. Gilliam representing the case. Obviously, if it comes back, he wasn't authorized, then we have to deal with that. But I'd be willing to proceed if the board is willing to proceed.
Thank you.
All right. All right, by way of a opening statement, the board is aware of this property. It's two oh four six Second Avenue. We've been dealing with this property for quite some time. It was declared uninhabitable on March first of this year. The board then went through its typical proceedings, did the title search. It was declared dangerous initially on March ninth of twenty-one. We then send the letters out, we post the property, and we'll go through all of this in testimony. But as the board is aware, this is subject to the resolution where we already declared it dangerous and established this hearing. This property is, the board has seen it, it's incredibly problematic, and we will present evidence as to why that property should be demolished for, as being insecure and unsafe and uninhabitable.
And clearly structurally defective.
And clearly structurally defective. Thank you. And that's all we have as far as opening statements.
Mr. Gilliam, could you come up to the podium and give us an opening statement and representative of the property owner?
Yes. Since the owner has actually owned the property for the last two and a half to three years. Upon purchasing the property, we called into Springfield Township and spoke with personnel in the reception office. They explained to us that they didn't have a building department, and our initial intentions was to put everything back in the same order that the house was. So we explained to them, as long as we were replacing the exact size lumber in the same place and the configuration of the building did not change, there was not a permit necessary, but just keep in contact with the administration department of Springfield Township and do an inspection with Captain Mike. Once, you know, we are, repairs have been made, we obtained electrical permit, and it seemed very unusual that there was no building department. But we've been in contact since day one of the repairs have started. When the property was first purchased, it was eyesore. There was yard debris, overgrown vegetation. The house was a shelter for rodents of every type. So, once we started the demolition process, all of the furniture was removed, everything that was left behind by the previous owner, all rubbish debris. We cut all the overgrown vegetation down. The reason the house looks the way it looks now, we removed the aluminum siding, and that's when the problem really started. We had a couple of neighbors down the street really stopping, complaining. They were under the assumption that the crew was just salvaging the siding for resale. On, within five houses in each direction, I spoke with the neighbors personally, and they look forward to the restoration of this specific project. Since I've been in constantly contact with the administration department of Springfield Township. Every time there was a violation, I've called back in a timely manner, resolved the problem. So at this point, we've had a structural engineer with the architect firm of Bernard Fields. He's a licensed architect for the state of Ohio. He's drawing up plans to renovate the home. So we've signed a contract with him, and we have a contract. His proposed time is sixty days to have us a drawing to present to the county and Springfield Township, because we have to have zoning sign off. So once I have approved plans, or from the architect with his seal on them, I'll bring them back in, let them sign off, then I'll take them to Court Street, which is the county building department, and they'll issue me a permit. Once the permit is issued, within sixty days, I should have the building closed up with a protective wrap on the exterior of the house, because we're going to apply vinyl siding. So it'll be a Trevek wrap, and it'll make the house look a hundred percent, you know, better. So right now, the siding was removed in order to repair the damaged wood siding. But the house has been standing in this shape. The siding was just on it for years and years. Some people say six, seven years this house has been in that shape, unoccupied.
So you're gonna have, you have an architect, and he's not gonna give you plans for sixty more days to...
Well, it's just the busy time of season for him, and it takes him that long to get the plans and everything together.
So in the meantime, are you gonna structurally do anything to the property?
Yes, it's, we reinforced it with structural bracing and everything. And if it's, once I talk with the fire department here, because they actually put the condemned order. When it's a condemned order, you can't physically go to the building and do any work. So, once the condemned order was placed, our hammers have stopped in motion. But since then, I've came out and barricaded the back of the building off, put more support jacks and things of that nature.
I'm just a little concerned, and I don't know about the rest of the board, that it's gonna stand like it is for another sixty days before anything else is done to it?
Uh, yes, I can, if with permission, I can reinforce the bracing on the building. That's no problem, but I would just need the permission of the, you know, Springfield Township.
Ms. Abrams?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Not allowed. You've had it two and a half years. When did you start working on it?
Uh, two and a half years, uh, we've, it's been progress on it. Probably, first we cleared the building. There was so much debris.
I understand, but two and a half years, and, I mean, it's, it's basically, I don't know. Doesn't look like it's livable. I mean, how much longer are you talking? If it took two and a half years to get it to this, how much longer until it's ready to be occupied?
Well, uh...
I mean, are we looking another two and a half years? Are we looking at six months? Are we looking at three months?
No, no, within six months.
Okay, that was the question.
Yeah, yes, sir, yes, sir.
And so you initially stated that you all were starting a demolition process when you first purchased the home.
Yes.
So what, what changed, what, why did you change from a demolition process to trying to restore the...
I mean, as far as the interior, demolishing the interior. It's a contractual term referred to a contractor's, the first stage of renovation is demolition. So I, I mean, remove the old drywall and any, you know, materials that's in the house. Old HVAC systems, old plumbing system, that's the demolition.
Okay.
Not the demolition of the structure itself.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Gilliam, if you wouldn't mind sitting down, we're gonna have the witnesses present the evidence as to the condition of the house. Why don't you sit up front here? That way, you'll hear better. And you, you get to ask them questions as well, so, so that's, it's kinda like a mini trial. So you'll be able to ask some questions as well. Um, I, for the township, Kathleen, do you also want to testify? All right, if I could have Mike Gould and Rob Lineiger swear in. And you know what? We might as well swear you in at the same time, because that's why everybody's sworn in. Just say I do after I say the hard stuff. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do, sir.
Beautiful. All right, everyone is sworn in. We're gonna have the fire chief provide information first. Rob Lineiger, were you responsible for reviewing this property at various points?
Uh, yes, Ms. Abrams, I was.
Have a report from March third of twenty twenty-one. Do you have that in front of you?
Yes, I do.
If you could just, without reading it to the board, if you wouldn't mind stating what you found on, in that report?
Certainly. Mike Stein, who is Captain Stein in charge of the code enforcement division, actually brought this property to my attention numerous times. Kept me up to date on the concern about this property. I wanted to see it for myself, so Mike Stein and I went out and visited the property. Actually, on the fourth of second. At that time, I found the, the property, in my opinion, to be structurally defective. Aesthetically, it looks, it looks rough. It's over a hundred-year-old building. But my main concern is really the structural integrity of the building. The contractor in front of me here explained the progress that he had been making. He had placed additional reinforcement under the structure, some scissorjacks and so on. But, and I, at that time, if you refer to the photographs, this building actually is, is leaning and appears to be shifting. And so really, this, the integrity of the structure itself is really in question. And that's my main concern, is could there be a potential collapse? The other concern that I had at that point, as you can also see in the photograph, is that this property was not secure. It's open on the north side of the building, as well as the west side of the building. The siding had been removed, and you can see right into the structure, exposing the floor joists and also the structural members of the building. So, in my opinion, it's also an attractive nuisance for kids in that area, if they would get in there and play. There's a possibility of structural collapse, as well as all interior finishes are exposed. As the gentleman explained, there was demolition previously, and it is a very rough structure, as, as the photographs show. Drywall has been removed, all electric, all plumbing, so there are a lot of interior finishes that are dangerous to anybody that would enter that property. So with that in mind, I then came back and, and made a recommendation, typed up the report, made a recommendation to the board that they consider this property unsafe. It's uninhabitable, in my opinion. It is unsafe, in my opinion. The structural integrity is also in question, in my opinion, and it's uninhabitable, also in my opinion.
Did you have an opportunity to look at the property today?
Yes, Ms. Abrams, I did. Actually, I went out there with Kathleen Kennedy as well, and I also attached a, also have a photograph.
Could you give your copy to Mr. Gilliam?
Sir, thank you. Thank you.
Does that photo represent how the property looks today?
It does, yes, and I took the, took the photograph at nine forty-five a.m. There is one correction, although I just noticed that this says that I re-inspected the property on April the twelfth. Should be equal to thirteen, so if you make that correction.
All right. So when, I mean, obviously, the picture looks problematic. What are you seeing today that you didn't see in your prior visits? Is it better? Is it significantly improved?
Well, really, what I found, there's been very little change. As, as gentleman reflected, he said the other, there hasn't been really any activity really in the past thirty days. One of the things that he has done, he has put up some barricades in the back to limit access. They are not permanent barricades, but they're probably four bank sheets of plywood that have been propped up so, to...
Are they eas... Can they be removed pretty, I mean, are they, you say they're propped up, are they secured?
Um, in my opinion, they are not.
So could, they could be easily moved?
Yes, they can.
Okay. So can anybody get into this, this site? That, your kids, adults?
Yes.
All right, and it looks like it's significantly leaning. Is it, do you think it's leaning more than it was, or is it the same?
Um, I would say it's the same. I mean, the same concerns are still there.
How far is it...
I don't say it's out of plum. I don't give you a particular degrees. You know, it's out by thirty degrees or twenty degrees. It's, it's just, it's leaning.
Is it in danger of, if it were to fall, to hurt anything on other property lines, or is it kind of secure?
No, it's, it's clear, it's clear.
It will clear, it will fall on his property?
If it would fall, it would fall on his property, or the owner's property, and the likelihood for additional property damage.
Just the damage to them and anyone that's under it at the time?
Yeah, it's more of a, a risk to human safety.
All right. Based on what you saw today and what you saw previously, do you still believe that this property is, is a dangerous property that requires demolition and removal?
Yes.
All right, so you're allowed to ask the fire chief any questions that you would have, if you have any. You don't have to, but if you have...
Well, I really don't have any questions, but I would just like to state a few things.
Well, let's let you do that, when you get an entire time to say whatever you want.
Yes, I mean, thanks, Mark, of course.
Okay, all right. I have no further questions of the fire chief. So I'll ask Mr. Gould to testify next. Why don't you tell us what, what experience you've had with this property?
My first time visiting the property, I believe, was on or about March twenty-fourth. When we met with Malachi, the fire chief, and Captain Stein and I. Our purpose for being out there was to educate Mr. Gillman on the process, the fact that the property, the structure had been declared a dangerous property, and that the hearing was going to commence today, and that he needed to quickly take action on making the property secure, safe, and remove all liabilities. At that point, you know, we, Rob and I, Chief Lineiger and I, took a look at all the issues that he outlined. I agree with everything that he has documented previous to this, and before. That's been my only experience at the property.
And what types of things for remediation of the property and to make it safe, did you discuss with them on the twenty-fourth?
Uh, all the requirements that would be, need to be met in order to acquire a building permit with Hamilton County. The structural engineering, the design certifications, all those things.
And when you looked at the property, were you concerned about its structural integrity as well?
It's structurally defective, yes.
Do you think it's at risk of falling over?
I do.
In the short term or in the long term?
Short term.
All right, any other impressions of the, the building that you have?
Not simply, it's just, it's unsafe.
All right. So you can ask Mr. Gould questions if you have questions for him as well.
Oh, did you also state to me that in order to comply with the Springfield Township, that we should obtain our architect and an engineer to assess the building?
Yes, I, I educated you on the fact that you would need to get that in order to get a building permit, yes, just in case you weren't aware of that step, yes.
Yes, so we follow these procedures. We submitted documentation from our architect. So we're at the point now, waiting on our architect to give us a set of drawings, which we can apply for a permit to stabilize the building up and, you know, make the building structurally safe. But the building has been, is not gonna fall anytime soon.
What I, what I understand, and I apologize for interjecting, is, based on my knowledge in both speaking to you tonight as well as speaking to staff, is that what you've submitted is a contract that you've executed with an engineering firm, not a report by an engineer certifying that the property is structurally sound. We do not have that report. I think what Mr. Gould was referring to is, in order to make sure your property isn't declared dangerous and demolished, you must provide something to us from an engineering firm indicating that the property is not structurally defective. You've not done that yet. You've simply provided us with the documentation that you've contracted with an engineering firm to potentially give you that report, which we do not have, nor do you, correct?
Well, he's actually, he's actually drawing me plans for the building as we speak.
Okay, but I think in order to become in compliance, just not to be confused, what Mr. Gould is referring to is, in order to be in compliance, the property has to be structurally sound and/or report from an engineer certifying that it's structurally sound, which we do not have. So at this point in time, you haven't complied entirely. You've taken steps to comply, but compliance hasn't, hasn't been met yet.
Yes, your prayers will not be fulfilling until we have a set of full drawings.
Sure, sure. Well, not even then.
Yes, then we have a set of full drawings to move forward with.
Right.
So basically, chief, there's nothing they can do to structurally make the building sound until, assuming the architect gave that, he told him it'd be sixty days before he has a plan. He can't really do anything until sixty days from now? Is that correct?
I mean, what I had asked for originally was for him to consult an engineer and have an engineer come in and tell us whether or not the structural integrity of that building is sound. The, the question I have now, I'm gonna, disclaimer here, I'm not a, I'm not an engineer, but I've been through BURB training, and I understand, and I'm trained in structural collapse, so I know the structural, you know, members of a building and so on. And the temporary shoring that has been placed is temporary. And I can tell you that the distribution of those support beams and columns, in my opinion, may not be adequate to, to support that structure.
Well, they're only supporting a temporary back part of it. They're not supporting the entire structure. One part of the structure is still intact. The back end of the structure, where the back wall was deteriorated, that's going to be partly supported.
Let me ask this, and I apologize, Ms. Abrams. And another sort of going off the rails here slightly. But I, I understand that it's gonna be sixty days before your architect and/or engineer, I'm not sure if it's both or one or the other. Those are two distinctly different sort of technical professions. It's gonna be sixty days for him to provide you with drawings in order for you to go by in order to rebuild the structure. I'm assuming that this engineer could provide you with a more immediate assessment of the structural integrity of the building and/or the supports you're using to supposedly shore up the building. I don't think that should take sixty days.
No, 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 sir.
Is that something that you can get relatively quickly?
Yes, yes, and if they didn't mind, if the Springfield Township were trusting their mind, I would go out there and make the barricade better. But I didn't want to seem like you were actually physically working on the building. So I screwed sheets of half-inch plywood around the open perimeter. I could even put more bracing if you were thinking it might fall, that's no problem. But I just have to, once he said, it says no work on it.
Right.
But with the permission, I can re-support it and do, I'm willing to do anything that it takes to make everybody happy. So if it's liable, I could put more supports. Right now, I have six supports up under the house that are mechanically aluminum. Each one is rated for thirty-five hundred pounds. Plus, I have six-by-six and four-by-four also up under there supporting the barriers. And that's more weight. If the house was in perfect condition, there would have been a two-by-four wall, sixteen-foot long, sixteen-inch long center, and that would have been supporting the back end of the house.
Looking at this, if I could just say something. Looking at this picture, I think the problem maybe is not so much the, and I'm not an engineer, but it's more like the lateral support to this thing. It looks like the, the whole thing might go sideways down, not, it's not gonna fall straight down, but...
But the side that actually is leaning, we have supports at angles, do you?
I, I saw some there. I don't know if there's, if there's enough or not, but the, here's what, kind of echoing on Mr. Gilbert. We're not trying to, we, we have a duty under the law to demolish dangerous, unsafe structures. But what, we're, we're not looking to penalize anybody. But I think what we need, if, if this is gonna take sixty days for you to be able to get full plans to, to move forward, in the meanwhile, we need your engineer, architect, to come up with a temporary shoring plan to make this thing safe in the interim, to, to finish that process. That would seem to me that that would be the first thing, and that would be something that needs to be, like, quickly. You need to get back with our chief so that we can, so that, that we can get that dealt with. And then at the same time, we need to secure the, the perimeter of the property so that we... Our big concern is that kids or somebody goes into this thing and it falls and somebody gets killed, and, and so we're...
Or hurt.
Or hurt. And so we want to make sure that the property is secure from, from people getting in, and then likewise, that it's braced, that we have some kind of report from an expert saying, this is what it takes to temporarily shore this thing up till I can get my final plans. But then even once you get this, then the, the pace on this is gonna have to pick up. We can't say, well, this has been, you know, I know that it hasn't been like this for two and a half years, but... We can't say, well, this has been, you know, I know that it hasn't been like this for two and a half years, but, but it's going to have to rapidly then move forward to get to a place where, where it is in, you know, it's contained, it, you know, it's, it's shored up, built up, you know, and encapsulated like you were saying you want to do. So I mean, I, I'm not opposed to giving them an opportunity to do that, but, but we have to pick up the pace here. This needs to be, we can't let it go on like this.
I'll look for time to do that, yes, sir.
So I think we're all in agreement. I just, we don't want it to be a dangerous property. And to have that happen, the architect's going to have to say, here's what needs to happen so that it's not a dangerous property.
The engineer actually works with the architect, and for him-
But that needs to happen quickly is what we-
The architect wouldn't take on the job until the engineer came out and his engineer actually physically came through the location and told him that the building-
And what we're saying is that needs to happen, like, quick, very quickly. You know, our goal is not to tear down the house. That's not what we're trying to do here, but we have a responsibility, if it's an unsafe structure, to do just that. So either it needs to be made structurally sound to where it passes an inspection that it's not going to fall down, or we are going to have to tear it down. Would you, would you agree, Ms. Abrams?
I would. I just, Mr. Gill, has the architectural engineer actually looked at this property? Has he gone on site?
Yes, he, yes, he came out through the fire.
And did he indicate to you he thought he could make it safe?
Yes, ma'am.
I assume he didn't indicate to you that it was safe currently?
Yes, it's, it's no, it's not going to fall anytime soon. Only we just had winds storm last week, a couple of weeks ago, when winds were 70 miles an hour, 80 miles an hour, almost a tornado wind, and the house didn't fall down.
Is your engineer in a position to put that in writing?
Yes, the architect, yes. I'll get an engineer, I'll have him put it in writing. That's no problem. I'll have him put that in writing. And in the meantime, I will go out there and, I'll go out there and board the house up and make sure, I'll put two-by-fours in back of those pieces of plywood and raise them up another level. Would that be?
Well, I think, I mean, the board stated very clearly what their concern is, is to, I mean, if someone can fix a property, they're happy to have someone fix a property. But it has to be safe in the interim, and right now, this, in, in our opinion, is not safe. You obviously disagree with that. But we, we believe that it's dangerous as it is today. So what the board will typically do in those situations is go ahead and have it, have it declared dangerous as of today. You will get 30 days under the law to correct some issues. The board during that time can reconsider if they're provided sufficient information to do that. And what I'm hearing from the board is that they'd be willing to consider doing that if you have an engineering report saying it's safe currently, if you render it safe and secure currently, if you make it so, you know, the unwitting person can't wander in there and get harmed, so secure it more sufficiently than it is now, and that you get the permits in a quick fashion. Just getting the permits doesn't do us any good. That doesn't solve any problem. You could sit there with the permits for a year and nothing would be done, and frankly, we'll be here again. Well, I mean, you want, you want some assurance from us that we're not destroying it either. So you need to get, the first step here is going to be getting an architect, a structural engineer to say that it's safe as it is and that it can be made safe going forward, or whatever needs to be done, needs to be done. So we're going to need that in writing in the short term, or, or they'll have to demolish it, in my opinion. It's up to the board with what they do. But, I mean, this is one of the worst structures we've seen from a standpoint of, I mean, if somebody runs into those poles, kicks those poles, hits them out, that, that thing's going down.
It is, but they're not going to get them out.
But regardless, if somebody were to get them down, that's a problem.
We need it to be structurally sounded 30 days. That's all we're asking. You know, if we get a structural engineer report saying that the building is now not a dangerous property within 30 days, then you can get your architectural plans and, and go ahead with the renovation that you have planned.
Mr. Gould, did you have something? Yeah, I was just going to add that based upon the action that the building department came out and took, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Linegar, he can't make any improvements to the property. They kind of put a connotation. He really, there's, until a structural engineer gets involved that actually comes up with the design and engineering that needs to be done to make the, the property secure at his own, to remove his risk, that is the belief that I have, and that's why I was giving him the insurance.
He's a structural engineer anyway.
Yes, he can't just go out there and take action.
Right. So structural engineer needs to look at the property and say, here's what you need to do, make it structurally sound.
Correct.
And then they need to execute that-
Yes.
-in the next 30 days.
That is exactly correct. And then get plans to actually do the work. But in the interim, what you can do- Yeah. What you can do is put up security fencing around the perimeter of the property to prevent people flowing onto it. Simply putting up plywood and two-by-fours on the existing structure itself does nothing, because if I'm standing next to it, right up against that plywood and the building falls over, guess what? I'm still dead. So I need to have fencing around the entire perimeter of the property, like you would see on a construction site, to prevent people from getting in the danger area, period.
Is there anything else you want to provide to the board?
I don't know. I follow all the rules, but then you could apply.
So that, so just so we're clear, what we're saying here is in the next 30 days, you're going to get a structural report. You're going to make this thing safe structurally. You're going to fence it off, and then we'll give you time to get your plans and rebuild it, if that's what it's going to take. But, but it can't, it's got to, you got to move quickly.
It has to be structurally sound.
Yeah.
That's all we're asking in the 30-day window.
Yeah.
But first, secure the area.
Secure the property.
Correct. And have a structural engineer get you the parameters of what you need to do to make it a safe property, and then you can go ahead and get your plan to, to fix it up.
I would recommend that the board go ahead and declare it dangerous, because it is dangerous. I don't think he can make any other declaration. With that, he gets a 30-day written notice, so he'll have 30 days to do whatever he wants. I, I would say that, just to let him know going forward, that the board is willing to enter into an agreement to not demolish the property. If within, I would do days, 14 days, he gets us an engineering report saying that it's structurally sound as it is with the remedial actions he's taken, that he secure it with fencing around the perimeter in seven days, and that we get plans and permits within 60 days if possible.
If we're going to give him 30 days to make it structurally sound, then we have to give him 30, not 14.
No, 30 days is the time period when you will destroy. There's a, there's a legal notice period.
Right, I understand, but-
But you can make him do different things in between then, and then, then push back the destruction date.
Well, then I'd like to make it like 28 days to get it structurally sound, or in 30 days, we'll demolish it, to give him more time. Because the structural engineer is not going to come out tomorrow, because we have this meeting tonight.
Yeah.
That's fine.
No, but he can put up fencing to secure it.
Yeah, I would say fencing.
I know that, but I'm talking, I'm talking about, she said fencing in seven days, the structural engineer in 28 days, and if in 28 days, we don't have a, a thing from your engineer saying that it's structurally sound, in 30 days, we will demolish it.
If I'm not mistaken, he's already had the structural engineer out there. They just need to write the report. He's already been there.
Well, we know it's not structurally sound today. He needs to-
So he needs a report written on what to do, right.
And then execute.
If Springfield Township is certain of this property, anytime they send out a notice in a timely manner, we comply. So I mean, it's not a matter of us not complying, it's just a miscommunication since this project started.
So the first motion-
Because we were aware that we were going to have a hearing. When I submitted the documents I did, there was not a formal hearing. There was going to be a discussion of a time frame to complete the project and everything. That's what-
For the board's reference, the hearing notice was post, the resolution was posted on the property 310 of 21, certified mail was sent out the same day.
I don't have the conversations.
No, it, it says there's a hearing. An ad was run on 311 to say that. The legal ad was posted on the property 326, so.
Delora, do we need two separate motions? One for the seven days and one for the-
I would do a motion, I mean, we can, you can put in that you're going to declare it dangerous, and that we'll enter into an agreement to revisit that 30 days upon the seven days. Do it as two motions. But you need to declare it dangerous first.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute. So you're saying you want to declare it dangerous?
Yes.
So the, just so Mr. Gillum understands that, if we declare it dangerous, at the end of 30 days, nothing's happened, the property will get tore down.
I understand. I understand.
That's what she's saying.
So will, will he receive this in writing, so he'll have what we-
Yes.
We'll do a written agreement with him and, and sign it that these things have to happen.
What's the seven days?
Seven days is to secure it with fencing. 28 days is to get a structural engineer report.
Saying that it's structurally sound.
Yes.
Yeah. Or if he has to take some remedial actions. Can he do that, or is he prohibited from?
That would be between him, his, his engineer and the building department.
Our probability to talk the first thing tomorrow morning, I'll actually go down there and speak with the supervisor.
Sure.
Because when he originally came out, the building was safe. The city inspector, the county inspector said the building was not going to fall down anytime soon when we first met him out there with the captain, my son. He said, get drawings and come back up here and go through the processes on. So then his supervisor came out, and I guess that's when they put the sticker. But I'll go down there and explain to them the findings here with Springfield Township or the trustees, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Ms. Abrams, just for clarification, the condemnation currently in effect was issued by the Hamilton County.
All right, I was going to say, the building department, thank you, I was going to say the same thing. It was the building department who made that order, so.
All right.
So they are not okay with the building, to be clear.
I move that the board determine that the property located at 2046 Second Avenue be declared a dangerous property because it is insecure, unsafe, or structurally defective, and that the board authorize township personnel to enforce the previously enacted resolution and remove the dangerous property condition within 30 days after giving the property owner 30 days written notice of the intended removal, demolition of the structures located on the property, which we've done. Now, are you going to write something? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So that motion says he's got 30 days to-
And then we're going to talk about the seven days and the 28 days.
This is just the first of two motions.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I thought she said second.
No, she said-
She motioned. I asked the-
Oh, you didn't make the motion.
I made the motion. She's second. I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's a roll call vote.
We need a vote.
Do a roll call.
All in favor?
A roll call.
Oh, oh, and you have a roll call, okay. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hahnaloff?
Aye.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
All the trustees agree?
And just do a motion that, to indicate that if the property owner, and I'll make the motion, you can just say.
Why don't you make the motion?
I'll make the motion, that if the property owner secures the property with a fence around the entire perimeter of the property in seven days, provides the board with a report from a structural engineer in 28 days indicating that the property is structurally sound and, or can be immediately made structurally sound, the board will postpone the demolition past the 30-day period. And that the expectation is that a building permit will be secured as soon as possible, but 60 days is the guideline.
Laura made the motion.
She can't make a motion.
Well, I gave the wording. Just say, you can say what she said.
I made the motion. They'll move.
Yeah.
They'll move, yes. And a roll call vote on that as well.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hahnaloff?
Aye.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Gill, we'll get together with you and put it in writing, and then we'll both sign it so that we can have it be official. But you need to secure the property in seven days. That's the first step.
So say everything goes well. We provide everything you guys want. How long will we have to renovate the building and make it opable?
Once, once you make the thing structurally sound, then, then I think you have as much time as you need.
Well, the, the, building permits and zoning permits are good for a specified period of time.
Yeah, yeah, one year.
One year. So as long as you're actively working on it during the term of which your permits are valid, I think you have that amount of time.
And our goal is just to make it structurally sound. That, that's what, that's what we need to do, like, right now. That's why we're, we pass these motions, sir.
But that building has been sitting like that for 70 years.
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe taking the siding off, exposed, I don't know. But at this point, we're at this point. So hopefully, you can get those things done in the next 28 days, and you guys can move forward with renovating. That would obviously be our first choice.
Do we have your contact information, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
With that, the public hearing for 2046 Second Avenue is now closed. And the regular trustee meeting will begin in a few minutes.